I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the very power and courage of this country. For its citizens. For its schools. For its justice. Evening, being audio and video recorded. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I know it's crazy, because we can't make it here. Karen can't make it, and Kyle can't make it. Yeah, of course, so we're good. Um, approval of minutes.
So moved. Back in them.
There any questions? Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, it's approved of claims.
So moved.
Again. I didn't want these over there. There is one in there that is an error, and we did get it corrected. Thanks, Paul. Which was that? Um, a reimbursement to Wes Garrett.
Okay.
With an extra zero. Thought we got it corrected.
Just a curiosity, what was the auditor and penalties to the IRS?
Yeah.
So. Um. We, I had a employees, we would pay them all in, like, the three months, you know. At the end of the year. I miscalculated because it changes over. The interest rate, and I had not. I guess, you know, chemo brain didn't update the new, the lead four wages.
Good.
So I was short on some of them.
Did Wes rebut on that?
Never should have saw it. Kind of mean hello. Paul caught it before they get nailed up. Now, and you'll be stepped out, and so after you all approve them, so Paul caught it before.
Good chat.
Yeah.
Never hear from him again.
Oh my God, what we said about budgets.
The IRS penalty was just because of, or is it?
Well, it's not necessarily a penalty, I typed it as that because I didn't make the adjustment from last year to new year to different tax rates.
This is an adjustment where it's.
Yeah, it's more of an adjustment than a penalty, I guess.
Adjustment probably in the right direction.
Yeah, I just, yeah, and I guess I put it in there so that I would remember because I guarantee the auditor is gonna pull it.
Okay.
So when he says that, it's like, oh yeah, I remember what that was. Because it's hard to remember. You know, nine months down the road.
Sure.
What she did.
Yeah.
I try to put key things in the memos, because it's like, oh yeah. Are there any other questions? Alan, they were saying. Close. Motion passes. Uh, who are, have a comment on non agenda items? Communications even from the board, um, I have a couple of, you know, for a couple of students that. You. Obie. And Yellen Rumager and. Yoli, Donna, and Sue. So I will send those around so you can leave your leisure.
There's a really nice article about him and without taking a national OB conference, I guess, conference.
Uh huh.
And there's a really nice article in the paper actually about, uh, about her experience and, uh, she's on my list to tap into and catch up to her next, so.
Great.
Yeah, it's really good.
Um, I don't have anything under the board chairs report, so we'll move on to. Competition.
Evening, everybody. Uh, thanks for coming. I know everybody's super busy this time of year, uh, myself included. So, uh, as everybody saw in the paper, voting for the graphics for the new bus is open. We will close that on September fifth. Uh, we'll tally out the votes then, and hopefully announce it during September's board meeting on which graphic won. So. Um, always, always, always still looking for drivers. Uh, please fit the word up. Uh. But, uh, yeah, always looking for drivers, um. I want to put out a big thank you to Lawrence Wright and his crew. They put Millings in front of the bus barn when they're, uh, when you know, I was known of all the streets around here. So that helped me out quite a bit and will be much appreciated this winter. Um, I have. My first semester bus inspections. Tomorrow. And that's the high control comes in and they inspect the buses to make sure that the route buses are good to go for the semester, so. Uh, we do it. Uh, right before school starts and then we do it, uh, right before second semester starts, so. Um. Then on Monday, I have first aid and CPR training with my drivers. And then that same day, uh, we will. Assign. All extracurricular events, hopefully. So. Hopefully we'll all recover this fall to get everybody tuned from events. And beyond that, that's pretty much all I have. Any questions?
You have to do that CPR first training, first aid training every year.
I try to do it every year, so just that way it's in the forefront of their mind. I mean, knock on wood, we never have to use it, but. I'd rather it be an annual training.
And we usually try to put it together.
Yeah.
We have two separate times, two, two usually the one that we put together since our coaches are required.
Yeah. Yeah, we kind of.
Two years, but we run it every year.
Yeah.
So that we have new people or those who have the option.
Yeah. So. Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Thank you.
It's all.
Again, lots of responses on the graphics.
I have not, probably yet to see what the voting status is yet. Some people. They voted on the page, so.
They did, Michael wanted.
Yeah.
Well, like, there is a link, there's Ash, that's a link.
Yeah.
I voted.
Vote if you. I did too. Hello. Okay, um, yes, I'm sorry.
So, starting out, um. We cleared everything out of the fairgrounds and so again, thank you to JC for allowing us to use the fairgrounds. And the fair board for, um, going along with it. It, it really saved our bacon. I don't know what we would have done with all that stuff. And, uh, but everything is in the new shed and is working on great. Some of it needs to be kind of culled through a little bit. You know, some chairs and stuff that are broken that I didn't have time to, but it really works out good. Um, I moved desk this morning and you can back up there early and go over there. You don't have to worry about the traffic and stuff like that, so. That shed is just gonna be a wonder. I was just telling that to Brian, um, during the winter, we'll move the grills and stuff off from underneath the stadium where they're at now. And we'll move them over there in the lawnmower and stuff like that can all go underneath there and, and pre up some of that area underneath the stadium before it gets kind of congested, move and stuff in and out for basketball and, and volleyball. Uh, the city crew, um, they've helped out several times here just recently and, and, um, they're online to move the slagers over here within the next couple of weeks and so. Um, and that's always appreciated. Scott is really great to get along with and, um, I wish that I would have got some of the Millings, but that's fine. I'm gone. I put my Navy in on it. You know, that's fine. Uh, so he got the Millings anyhow, uh. The city crew though, uh, they'll be in line and of course we had some good summer help, um. And I want to thank especially Brooke for coming in and pitching in with Larry and Cory. Uh, man, she was in, just really did a great job at both schools helping out wherever she was needed and Larry actually, he, boy, he doesn't do this. I mean. I think I've been on that thing once, but he let her drive his Amboni down the hallways and he just, she thought that was pretty cool, so. Um, if we need that, she knows how to run it. I don't, um. Anyhow, she was really good and of course Larry and Cory, the, the schools, I don't recall that they've looked any better, um. We're almost ready to go. There's just a few things in the hallways that we're touching up and, uh, we'll be ready to open up on Wednesday and, and that's a good, that's a good thing. Um, I want to also pitch in. The elementary teachers. Because they spend the entire summer moving their classrooms around and that's not really in their contracts, they, but they do it because they love what they're doing. And so. If you see those people over there and they're over there day and night getting those classrooms rearranged, it's amazing. Um, and I hope that that's one of the last times that we have to do that because it, it's just insurmountable how much stuff that they have to keep our kids going. But the effort that they put forth, there isn't, you can go to Great Falls, something like that, and they got a crew that just comes in, but they don't have anybody doing like our teacher do it, so. Thank you to the elementary. All right, the gym floor is done and, um. We'll open that up like we always do, um, in a couple mornings, um, we'll get in there and I think that they'll probably put the volleyball on it up on Thursday night like they have in the past. And then we'll open it up and the kids can start playing back where they were like. The kitchen is done, um, we were talking about that the last time. Um, it's completed, it's a hundred percent, they're in there, they cleaned and they're ready to open up, um, just a few minor things. They've been in there getting their, um, utensils ready to go and the spices on the racks and everything. Um, it wasn't a big mess, but they did go back over everything in the kitchen and so, um. On that note, um, one thing that has come up that we are looking at and, and it's not an efficiency as such, but it can be. Um, in the future, since we've changed the drain, we need to look at a grease trap and so when I get down into here, there's a couple of other things that Gary. Um, engineering out of balls mechanical, Gary Morris came down and he is now doing, uh, uh, grease trap for us on the outside that we will dig in. And. Put us within all of the state regulations because we've changed that over. So as soon as we get the map from him on what we need to do, um, we will get that redug up out front. And it's not a big dig and slice that in and, uh, and our grease trap will be able to be pumped a couple of times a year. And that will be legal with the state right now. We're just kind of grandfathered in, but the, the state is actually recommending that. Um, and. The grease trap is on the big picture, on the big map for next year. If we do the plumbing, it's already on there, so this is just one step. Closer to eliminating all that stuff in the kitchen. Also, you have to do in the kitchen will be, um, the water. And that will be pretty easy because the plumbing will be down on the sewer. All right, state boiler inspector has been down and I've got kind of a bite mark, um, he's got one too, but, um. We're not gonna get certified. Until some corrections are done and we talked about this last time, but now it's even a little bit more severe because now we know what the problem is. If you go downstairs, there's two venting, uh, sources for free air that the boilers are required to have so many square inches. And. We don't have enough square inches. Well, the reason is we, we've kind of eliminated that because it freezes the water pipes up above and Craig has replaced them a few times already. And I tried to explain that, but that, that goes nowhere. He, he is a state inspector. So. We're looking at how many inches we can increase on the door vent and Gary's on that too. If we buy a new door vent and increase from, uh, forty inches to sixty inches. And will that give us enough square inches and, uh, damper it differently towards the floor more to not go up onto the pipe? So. There's two things that Gary is working on or two, two or three. One of them is the square inches. Um, and trying to get that resolved or using a different fan system down there to blow the air against the boilers that are, the boiler that is running and have two fans down there. So we're working on that in order to get the state inspector, um, satisfied. Also. The major issue down there in the basement is that on discovery, um, and it's been this way forever. But the two water heaters down there, there's a water boiler that's a hundred and fifty gallons and it dumps into a three hundred and fifty gallon tank. And that supplies the whole elementary school, all the hot water, except the kitchen. Kitchen is at a hundred and forty degrees and it has its own heater. But they both air vent or exhaust vent into where the boiler goes out and that vents up into the stack that you see above the school. We are in violation of that. So. Gary's working on that with him, with him. He's calling them and they're communicating because he's trying to get him to resolve that issue. There's two options and Brad can, uh, uh, go through this later on or whatever. There's two options that are gonna come up. We line that big tall sixty foot. And put in, uh, a flex tube on one side and then line that completely and put the top on it. And then it's gonna be legal. And that's gonna be a horrendous cost because of the, the labor involved in that, or we go from gas to electric heaters. And the one heater is just kind of a, uh. Household heater right now, it's a forty gallon or fifty gallon, one ten, not so bad, it's about six hundred dollars, but you can put in a surge tank that goes in alongside of that. And put in an on demand heater. But the on demand heater also requires a venting tube and there's, we're on the middle of a, uh. Enclosed area, so that's kind of scrapped. Then we go into a new electric hundred and fifty gallon boiler and the cost of that's gonna be about sixty five hundred dollars. So in, and doing the matchups of how this is all come down, the cost is gonna be a toss up between lighting the blue. And putting that together or putting in the new water heaters. Brad and I were down on discovery and I, I thought it was like ten years old, but that, the one water heater that we would replace the gas on the main boiler for the school of the hot water is. Twenty-four years old.
Twenty-four.
Yeah, two thousand. So. It could go out at any time, so if we line that and we're going up into that blue, what are we out? So it's, it served its day. So we did go to electric and we got, and we have the new power source in there, thank God, we, uh, when they put that all in there with that new transformer and stuff like that. Um, there was a source right across the side of the room that you can go into that, that heavy of a duty, uh. So. Gary again, with all the mechanicals been out, um, twice and, and we're looking at those three things with him. And he'll have that, uh, just shortly as far as, uh, what the recommendation is to satisfy state boiler inspector. Um, Charlie was here at one point, um, tech, and maybe Pat has that too, but the tech is pretty close. Um, there's only two more wires to run for cameras, about one and a half basically, um, and the phone's been put in and. Um, the Bob guy will be here on the twenty-sixth and do the box. And that'll be a complete changeover on that and all the wires are there. They've been here and inspected everything and everything's ready to go and everybody else. Um. The. Main issue tonight, um, the plumbing. And so we got started on that process this last week and, um, it is in progress and the parts ordered. They ordered on Thursday and Friday. And as soon as they get here, um, we will attempt to start delving into the, uh, plumbing of both schools. Um. The plumbing at the high school has been started. And the urinals have been torn out to the point where they need to be shut off in the back and the porcelain can be tore out, the stainless can go up, the urinals can go on. The new toilets will be set and the sinks will be set and it'll all be replumbed. And that can be done, um, with or without people in the building. Um, it isn't gonna make any difference if the. The hard part's done and the dirty part is done and, um, so. The elementary, um, that can be done at any time because it's at the back of the building and nobody's using it. Uh, they're gonna change out the guts on each one of those and go to a moan. Um, control. And it will be something that can be worked on and also the hot water on, again, on discovery, he thinks that the hot water is, is there, it's just not proceeding. Um, into the, into the showers. Um. That should be within the next week as soon as he got, has the parts on that, um, that again, they were ordered on Thursday. Um, then eight of those showers will be ready to go for football and our first home games on the twentieth. Um, and we'll have the floor painted and, and, uh, we have two new toilets gonna be set in there also with new mechanicals on them. So the locker rooms down there should be in good shape, um. I don't know what else to say.
That's a lot, no, yeah.
Okay.
Good job.
You're all in. All right. So if there's no question on that, um, if you notice, and this, this goes over here to him, um. We had been requesting a couple of years ago to, uh, broom out an area for the kids, well. I happened to see that Brian Scott was over there on main corner, uh, sidewalk. So I got ahold of him right away to see if we could marry in with him and, and it did work out because he needed three or three and a half yards. And. So they were right over and they took out that first one, which was right by the kitchen that has been that way for four or five years and it's been. The insurance guy hates that because it's just gravel and we got the shufflers and everything else going through. So they got that one ready and they saved the gravel and then the next morning they figured out their yardage and they went down and dug out that bustle.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. So, uh, and that worked out because they put the dirt right over by the fire hydrant and they took the gravel out from that one and moved it over to there. I mean, this was a clean sweep. And they poured them all that same day, got theirs done in R two, so, and that needed to be done for safety, so that bustle, I mean, we've been wanting to get that done.
Yeah.
For a couple of years, so, so that bustle was in and done and, and so it's gonna be a lot easier for us to broom and gate dirt, so, um, that's all done. Tech is done, um, seasons are ready to start. Jamie's got her report coming up and we're, we're almost ready to go with that. All right, the other issue tonight. It's a safety issue and I don't know that anybody's really talked about it much, but I think that it's time, um. But it used to be that Adam and Erica patrolled our zones and they were around our schools a lot. You'd see the cop cars, you'd see the pickups, you'd see them around our schools. Well, since we've had to change over to the sheriff's department, I don't know what service we're gonna have. It was not supposed to change, but as you all will know, if you're living in town, kids change dramatically. And I'm afraid that we don't have service or going to have the service in our bustles that we do normally have in the morning. Or at noon or after school. So I'm hoping that the school board would write a letter. To the sheriff's department and burn and ask them what services we're gonna get or what we can expect because that's a big issue with us. And I don't think anybody's addressed that. And being the safety officer, I think that we really, really need to look at it. Our noon hour around here, we got turbos that just really think that they gotta kick them. Going down this street and up the highway and stuff like that and, you know, somebody's gonna get clipped, um, we got the stop signs put up out here and that was just to save the turbos coming out of the. The back alley back there. But I'm really concerned more or less about the bustles because they've been out the elementary all the time and, and they've always patrolled down there and they, and you know that, they've been around there all the time. All of a sudden you go, this is a cop car and then they're, it's a cop car and they're sitting there. Well, it put that in everybody's mind that there's gonna be somebody there. We don't have that anymore. We need to address what we're gonna do or how it's gonna be handled or what kind of cops gonna be there. Or, or they're gonna be there. So I would hope that the board would take that under consideration and write a letter. And then, um, it's, it's a major issue and, uh, we've never, never, ever had that problem and we do this year. So if somebody hasn't addressed it, we are right now. Um, with that. No further questions? Do you have more stuff?
No, no, you pretty well did my job. I don't, did I get it?
You called it.
Okay.
Thanks, Rob.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
On the app, the board, do you want me to call the sheriff's department? Would you like me to put together a letter and let it by Russ and just, and we'll show them?
I think that would be the idea. Um. I'm not, I feel like I'm not super aware of what kind of problems we've had, because I haven't been down like.
Yeah.
Um, I think it'd be great.
I can, I can.
I do plan on putting those signs back out now.
Yeah, perfect. We have to have those signs and so I just think that like normally we've always had.
We've always had them out, but we, we discontinued because we're doing pretty good, but now we've got to retrain and I've got the new lights coming in more because they kind of went on us, the, the solars, the blinkers.
And no matter even with the sign, it's better to have the cop cars.
That's right, we'll come in the zone again, this right, that your, your guys are gonna have channels or have to move those back.
Perfect, that's great.
I can, I can work with you, talk to us. Let me do a little.
Perfect, I love that.
Reconnaissance and we, I'll either call him first or call him in my heart or we'll, we'll do something.
I call Eric quite often.
Well, you can, and, and you can actually call the, um. The GMP commander Stan. With, I don't know what they call him now.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. I'm Governor Terry Smith. Terry gets in touch, he, he is actually gonna do the blame work on it anyhow, because Vern is on his way out, so, you know, I would talk to the undersheriff.
Okay.
So that's, that's a conversation we can start with.
Sure. Love it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Good evening. Uh, I don't have a ton yet, but pretty soon you'll have to listen to me because everything's gonna start. Uh, it's exciting. It's coming soon. Practices will start on Friday, the sixteenth, which is this Friday, um, for high school. And we're also gonna start our middle school football in order to get them enough practices on Friday. And then the middle school tennis and volleyball will start on Monday, which is how we've kind of done it in the past. Yeah. I thought we've done it in the past.
We gotta clean that room up.
Which room?
Right, the change room.
Okay, I'll help you.
Okay.
Um. So. It's here, it's time. Uh, I've got the schedules. Built, they will change, I am sure. They're on the website and the calendar. As they are now, but, um. As we all know, things are ever, ever changing. You know, I got a call last week, the, uh, team was changing to JV only season and I got a call, can we change this date? So. At this moment, they are, they're, um, we'll probably have a few changes, but we've got our middle school tennis schedule built. We'll have a. A whole little home tennis match the week of, um. Homecoming here. We've got our football schedule built. We will have a JV game happening at the beginning of September. But our first varsity game isn't until the twentieth of September. Um. And middle school will be with them. Volleyball, we have the very first game of the season is August twenty-ninth here. For the middle school and the high school and then cross country, they do their own thing, so I'm still, still building that one and they add them on the calendar, but, um, it's growing a little bit every day, so. We're almost there and done with the schedules. Uh, we sent some coaches if they could and were able to the coaching clinic in, always in Great Falls at CMR. And it's a great place. It's for the whole state. You get to listen to a lot of, a lot of different people, um. I spent my time between the track and the administrative side of it, so. It's great. You get to listen to professional track coaches, to high school coaches, to across the state, across the country, so. It's a great learning experience and a lot of our coaches were able to take advantage of it. We did have a CPR, we generally have it together, but this year, um. Just the way the dates worked out, we had two offerings, so I had some that attended already and then I have a few that will attend with the bus drivers on the nineteenth. Um. I am busy trying to get all the kids checked in and organized to make sure that they have all of their things in to be able to practice. Just like you expect your coaches to have their CPR and their first aid and their, all their rules clinics, the kids have to go through and have their physicals and, um. Physical statements and their activity card and their concussion test and their concussion statements and so. Uh, we're getting there and then I will meet at every practice when they start to. Either support the kids who need some extra work or give the coach the okay, who is there to play and collect some rosters of that day. Do you have any questions so far?
They're going better or parents struggling?
Uh, still, I got about half the kids in there.
Yeah.
Um. The system that we use is not anybody's favorite. So if you hear a lot of complaints on it. It's, it's the one we gotta use, but, um, it works better to use the computer and not the app, so if you wanna end the conversation there, just tell them to use the computer and not the app. That helps a lot. I, uh, got to meet with MHS, they, you know, they know how I feel about it, it's not my favorite thing. I made them painstakingly watch me log in and try to use it. And then he quickly went and made a note in his book after that, because it was. Not an enjoyable type for either of us. Um. We scheduled sports photos, we scheduled our concession lottery so that the kids in the groups can sign up for that. I had a coaches meeting tonight before I met with you and went over everything eligibility and, and expectations and, um, their roles and supervision, communication, all the things, so. Think we're, hope we're ready to go. Um, I have a few hires left. I think we've gotten through a, a lot of the year, but I have a few left. So. So this um one we did last year just to cover ourselves and I realized I didn't do it again. So I would like to recommend that we continue using Shannon Grossman as a volunteer. For our mental health coach. She does a lot with the volleyball and she's helped where needed in other programs, but she does work with Shan- hand in hand with Shannon. And they use her a lot. So I'd like to recommend Shannon Grossman as a volunteer, yes, mental health coach. Volunteer to the programs. Okay. Any discussion? Then I went back through my notes and I'm not sure if I did this or not. My, sorry, I scribbled and it wasn't clear to me. Um so I would like to recommend Deanna Woodhouse or D F R, excuse me. She has volunteered to help with all the middle school and high school tennis programs in the past and has stepped in whenever needed and and been an assistant and done whatever. They needed of her and she would like to continue in that role. So I would like to recommend, I don't know, do we need to do that in two separate things? Or just the tennis program in general? Is okay volunteer?
I think so.
Okay. So Deanna has a volunteer with the tennis program.
So moved. Second. Yeah, I think we touched on that.
Wait, I couldn't remember if I did Deanna or if I just did the coaches though. So I just figured I better cover my bases. Any question? I'll in favor say aye. I just wanted to make you aware of cross country, a change in cross country. You had previously taken my recommendation and approved Jenna Box to be an assistant. She has decided um that that role is is not one she can play at this time. So she is not going to be the assistant. I do not feel that I need to bring to you a recommendation for another assistant as we have two that you have volunteered to assist. And between the two, and and I told them that if there was a situation that wasn't covered, I. Support it as well. There's always going to be at least two coaches there somewhere. So I don't think we need to worry about refilling what Jenna was between the two volunteers. That have agreed to play the part because one of them or myself will always be able, and Hallie's always there. To support Roxy and she was comfortable with those decisions. So unless you want me to.
Approve the volunteers.
We've already approved the volunteers. Yeah, you I brought you, I brought you a head coach and assistant coach and two volunteer assistant coaches. So we had four playing roles in the program. Jenna has stepped back and so we still have three playing roles. And then you have the two admin who are, I can and she's there with her children still. Um unless you would like me to take a different route, that is my recommendation of how we continue at this time.
See how it goes. See how many kids we have.
Yeah, and that's the other thing. It's not, I think we're gonna feel less than we had in the past. I'm not sure.
But I just don't want us to take advantage of somebody.
No.
They're filled with a large role and we're not paying them, but.
Yes, you know, I I very much understand that, but at this point, without seeing, you know, the little details, I feel we're we're comfortable in where we are standing at the moment. Um. I wanted to also let you know that I have had a few interviews for the cheerleading coach position. But at this time, there are no recommendations I am comfortable bringing to you. So that is still an open position. Um if you know anyone, please send them my way. Um I think at this point. We just keep looking like we did last year. I will have, we didn't have strong interest in the fall cheer. When we talked in the spring, I will probably have a little meeting at lunch once school starts. To see how, what our numbers are and to look at different options and go from there. I have had some conversations with people who. Might be willing to step in for the winter position, but we're not comfortable or able for the fall position. So we're, I'm gonna hold a pattern for that. Um and then the last thing I think that I haven't done is basketball. And so there's still a lot of. Things that are changing all the time, you know, um. I'll talk to Highwood when that comes closer and we see, you know, kids that we're getting and things. They sent a coach last year too, so. But at this point, I would like to recommend continuing with Party O'Hara as the boys' head coach. And Megan Lawrence as the boys' assistant coach. At this time, last year we split it between Megan and Eric Wilman. And uh two programs was a lot of time and a lot of effort and um could like to step back into one this year. And so I I do need to sit and I may bring, you know, Megan wants to split her time. When she can watch her son, she wants to watch her son. So I may come back to you, but at this moment, these are who I have for you. And then we may add to someone if they want to split it with her again, or if she wants to volunteer in that role. But I I know people have been asking and so I wanna give you what we have so far. And it's party and party is the head coach and Megan is an assistant for the boys. And then um I would like to reckon, I don't, do you want me to grow the boys separate or do you want me to talk about it right now?
Yeah, maybe something.
Okay, okay.
Make that motion. Second.
So are we still looking for others?
I need to sit and talk to Megan about how much time she thinks she would be on and have her look at her schedules. And then we have the. We can wait on Megan if you, that would make you feel more comfortable. I'm confident in Party being the head coach and recommend making that recommendation. How if you would like to wait to see if she wants to split it or. Or be the volunteer, we can, we can hold off on that. I just want to make you aware of the situation and not panic because I know that usually we have the even place by now.
Yeah.
Or we can come back with a different recommendation if you want me to change it. It's up to you. What you want to proceed.
I have a problem approving it and just saying.
I mean, I think collectively, if there is, you know, a weekend that Megan needs to be gone, I'm sure collectively between the two teams that. It'll be an easy.
Yes.
A J V game or.
We've talked about it as a whole program as well and.
Yep.
So.
I guess my bigger concern is if you fill that role, if you. You just got somebody in there that's my baby and thought about there all the time and if we can't fill it or the visit is not open anymore.
Okay.
I just feel like that we should fill it as planned. I know we need to make a move forward and get some.
It's up to you and how you wanna proceed, but that's my recommendation. Now she will play a role somehow and I recommend Party as as head coach. Yeah, so that's the motion. She was there probably ninety percent of the time. She missed three games and she came back in the middle of one of the games from being at another game.
Yeah, I think if there's.
I just want you to, I wanna be fair because she made it clear that she wants to watch her son and I and you heard that and I want you to know that. That there is that role.
But I mean, that is a big deal.
Yeah.
I think that, yeah, if somebody expresses interest in the position, you can adjust.
And I'm not gonna stop looking to support them.
Yeah.
We're gonna make the best situation and and. Um I just harvest is a hard time to catch all of them right now and I don't wanna leave you without knowledge of what's going on too. So. All right, are we ready to vote on that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion. And then for the girls, I would like to recommend continuing with Eddie Foltz as the head coach and Eric Wilman. As the assistant coach and Rihanna Foltz as the volunteer. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye. We we've got a lot of supporters. We, and they were very good at supporting each other. I just. Don't want anyone to be in the dark about the situation. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions? Oh. Oh, I thought, okay, okay. Sorry, I forgot we didn't do that. So concessions. I would like to recommend our business office lady again. Um Callie, O'Hara, Roxy, Ellen and Connie Walker. Said they would be willing to take on the concessions role again. They did it last year, stepped in last year and saved us and did a great job. And uh they came. Part of their routine, whether they like it or not, but they actually, they must like it because they said they do it again.
I mean, they didn't have any volunteers either.
There's, oh, there's that too.
I like how it's safely in-house, so I.
Yeah, it was convenient. I'm not gonna lie.
It is handy.
To not have to hunt people down. And anything else? All in favor say aye. I'm sure I forgot many things, but uh thanks to Russ and the and Pat and. Roxy for helping get everything ready for the new year. It's exciting. You know, it's. Always sad to see summer go that little bit, but I'm I'm ready and I'm excited and it's gonna be great. Uh Booster Social, the red and, the red and white Booster Club Social is August twenty sixth. If you would like to join us, please feel free and welcome.
Twenty six?
Twenty six. Five thirty.
On the calendar, right?
Yes, it's on the counter. Yeah.
I take it Monday to ten.
Twenty seven, Monday to twenty six at five thirty. If you had looked before, we had it, Amy had it earlier. I I bumped it a week because everything is off a week this year with the um calendar and athletics, so. And so we'd love to, for you to join us and we'd love to see you also at the games if you are able. That's my assumption.
We asked if that ordered today.
Yeah. That's the middle one I'm having, like, there on the tractor in the combine, so I haven't had a lot of conversations. I'm in the basement. Yeah.
I need to write it down so I can get everything out.
Also, I forgot to bring this up, Russ, but I heard that the record boards are up on the wall.
Oh, yes, I told you. I told you they look good. Looks really good. I was, I was excited. I was late to my own meeting because I was down there reading the record boards. Do you have any questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Let's talk about the elementary school. Right? And the packet for you to rest with a bunch of data. Okay, so this is kind of just, I don't have a formal work report for you guys. Um just some important dates in here. I'm excited for school to start. I had a teacher say that one of the best days of the year. Is the last day of school, but then the second best day is the first day of school. So we're excited.
You have one more, Ross?
Yeah, I do. Perfect. So on there you'll see a couple of um upcoming dates. We'll have kindergarten roundup tomorrow in the parks, which is always exciting. And there's a flyer too. We're really gonna work um to try to post some more flyers and information on Facebook and social media since that's. A large way our family communicates. So there's a flyer in the packet that you'll see. We have new teacher orientation starting the nineteenth and I'll really just be supporting Mr. Poole because we have all returning staff this year. So no new staff, elementary school, mine is Mr. Lannington, but I don't know if that counts because he's kind of been here before. So. We're excited to have Anna back. We're fully staffed and ready to roll. Um we'll have our back to school night on the twentieth and then school starts the twenty first. And the back to school Super Bowl shindig is our back to school carnival. So our theme this year is teamwork makes the dream work. So we're planning a fun-filled Friday afternoon as usual. Also filled with some playground expectation and some learning as well. Right, Russ? Yeah, the SpongeBob every legs are back. We're really excited. But next week, we'll handle that next week. So the school looks amazing. Cory's. Yeah, the kids love it. Cory's been doing such a fabulous job and the trim looks great. Russ has been working hard along with, everything looks great. We're getting ready to go. Um the teachers worked extra hard, as mentioned by Russ, this summer moving their rooms and so. We're really excited though to have all of our classrooms on the main level and we have fifth and sixth grade. Back in their own little space, which I think is really great for them. So um. We'll start divvelling the week of the twenty seventh and then no school um September second. And so just some highlights that I wanna touch on, um I have a new secretary, Katie James, and she's doing a fabulous job helping me. And especially kind of fielding all my ideas and schedule changes and things like that. We have schedules almost finalized. And so that feels really good, starting before the first week of school. Um schedules are, yep, and this year we're really focusing on playground support and supervision. So um we have included more people on playground duties and we'll talk about that at our back to school staff meeting. Um you'll see a graphic of some playground expectations just on how we can support our students having more success and less office visits. And less crazy adults dealing with their behaviors. So we're hoping to support with that. Uh I did put this acronym um on here, TIPS. And so it's um it's gonna be an individual visualized phonics support intervention that Anna's gonna be doing, so. We're happy to have Anna back and really this year it's been great for me to kind of, I feel like I know our staff and so I've tried to make decisions on. Um how to utilize people like in the most effective manner. And so we're hoping to be able to not only incorporate devil's results, but some more testing of core phonics survey for Anna to be able to deliver. Like individualized kind of micro interventions to our students that are either strategic or in- intensive. So I'm super excited about that. She'll do that for kindergarten, first grade and second grade. To really make sure that we're honing in on those skills so that our kids are proficient by third grade. We'll also have um an upcoming test match. We'll not start our new testing for the state. We'll start in October. It's our first testing window. So I put that off like for a couple of weeks after we get up and running. And I just kind of wanted to highlight too, I think a big theme this year for us at the elementary school is just community. We have an amazing community of educators and paraprofessionals as well as retired teachers that come in. And so really utilizing that and opportunities for our staff to build that community with one another, like not only build community with one another. But with other students. And so we have spirit rally teams this year, which will be super fun. So the kids are um grouped in in groups kindergarten through sixth grade and then they have like a spirit rally team leader. So these will be in addition to our assemblies. We'll do these in the morning where they're like fun, community building activities. And then that way, not only are children are kind of forming relationships with kids, you know, vertically, not just in their own grade level, but other adults as well. Giving these children, especially children that come from trauma, more safe relationships with adults is huge. So hopefully. That those spirit rallies, they stay contained and controlled and it's a great time. So, yeah. Do you guys have any questions? Go for it. Teamwork makes the dream work.
So for my general report, all I really have is I have applied um for the interclass loan um with. Um with Dave Montana and um Dave has said that he'd be back to me next week if there was anything I missed or need to fill in. And quit giving answers. Um it's a pretty easy one-page form, so. They hopefully get back to me soon. I've been pretty busy um with the um T F S report, which is the trustee's financial report. Which um just lists all of the expenditures and revenues we've had throughout the year and each fund. And then also with the budget, they kind of go hand in hand. And so I don't have the trustee's financial report for you tonight. Because in order to have a trustee's financial report that I can print out and it looks legible. To somebody that doesn't do it every day, you have to have your budget approved. And I didn't feel that it was appropriate for me to submit the T F S report to O P I. Without your guys' approval on the budget first. So I'll have that T or T F S report for you as the next. So I'll have that T or TFS report for you at the next meeting and then we can go to the budget. Uh, the blue paper is your high school budget, the pink is your elementary. The budget only has budget to spend, so it's not actually a very whole picture of all of our school funding, it's. Only a picture of the budgeted funds. So not everything is a budgeted fund. So you can kind of look through there and the these numbers are given to us mostly by the state, um. You don't have a lot of wiggle room of, you know, what you can score where. Um, so these were numbers that were given to us, you know, way back in January with your preliminary budgeting and then they just break it down. Based on, you know, if you look estimated funding sources. And where your actual, your non-levy revenue comes from, which we don't have a ton of non-levy revenue, um. So if there's any questions, you know, let me know, but it hasn't changed much from last year. And you can see, you know, like our transportation sign in the high, our transportation sign is tremendously levy for. And we stayed within those mills that was put out, you know, back in January, estimated, you know, you publish that notice. Um, and then you can see like in the high school, the bus depreciation reserve fund, you can see all of our new buses are listed there. With their original purchase price and what we can depreciate them for every year, so that's kind of a, you know. Snapshot that you want to get out and figure. On that one and the rest of them are all pretty self-explanatory and haven't changed much. From last year to this year. And the only other thing that's kind of tricky when you first look at them is the reserves. So what you want, your ideal goal is to go into every year with full reserves. And reserves is the cash that you use from July one to November when you start collecting taxes. So you want to make sure that you have full reserves every year so that you have some cash to use and you're not falling behind. So that's the, to me, that's the only like real tricky piece when you look at it there and it says, you know, it's an add to fund balance or extended budget or. Um, you know, reserve. And each fund has a different percentage that you can use as reserve. And so we tried and we did last year too, we have full reserves in every fund, so that we're not going backwards before we even start. And then we, you know, have spent all of our money, you know, right down to the nitty-gritty to where you don't, you don't get any re-appropriated back to the state. So. Or at least this for me at first, I'm starting to now get the hang of it.
We do need a motion to relieve, right?
Yes, and then don't stop.
So let's do.
So moved.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
If anyone have any questions, just let me know, if I want to go into the fascinating world, if you want to, if you want to be down. What a fascinating world. I I pretty much have some free time, I just there looks up at chemo, so if you want to give me a call, it's a schedule's pretty wide open. If you can zoom, it may be interesting, that some graduate people at chemo, they might not appreciate it, so.
Russ, we kindly, we kindly mentioned before, the work's being done with the uh, upgrades with technology. And so yeah, a big shout out to Russ for for pulling wires and for Carly for the work that she's done over the summer to get this all ready, but. Uh, again, I would ask to do any of the questions, Russ gave a pretty thorough report of what things are going on, um, the fobs. Look to be installed by August twenty-sixth, Jamie and I have already talked about the transition from. The current practice, we've adopted a policy now for the use of the gym, Jamie's gonna be making phone calls to folks who currently have fobs. And we hope for a smooth transition between from what we're doing now and. How the the new fob system will work, so stay tuned, but that's that's where we're at with those items. Okay, any questions about that? Okay, then I need to jump in and request that we move to a closed session, I have a request for early graduation. And uh, the student's right to privacy outweighs the right of the public to know and uh, so we could uh. Precess, big closed session, please. I would kindly ask the floor to accept my recommendation to allow students that shall not remain. To be allowed to graduate early and the graduation request is that she be allowed to graduate at the end of her seventh semester, which would be the end of. The first semester of her senior year.
Are there any questions or discussion? Hey, all in favor, say aye.
The other part of this discussion is that um, we want to have a policy committee, uh, hopefully before the September. Board meeting, if if possible, we've got a couple of things which I'll mention uh, later, but regarding early graduation, I. I've been going back and forth between the Office of Public Instruction and Montana School Boards Association regarding the uh, law. That was passed regarding the collection of A and B for students who graduate early. And just today I got the clarification that in order for us to collect A and B for a student who wants to graduate early, they must complete their seventh semester, bless you. So um, in light of that, we want to read readjust our, the policy that we created last year regarding the graduation that specifies. That we want a student in order for us to, for the board to consider and accept a request for the graduation would follow the other things within the policy. But it would have to complete seven semesters of high school, um, by being, according to what I heard in the email today, by being enrolled in October. They're a part of the A and B for the the fall count for for that school year, so um, I will adjust that policy, we'll have another discussion about that.
Which in several terms means we will no longer approve. Requests for graduation after six semesters.
Okay, um, like Roxy, I'm on my, I'll send this board report out tomorrow electronically, there are some calendar reminders on there just to uh, bring to your attention. Excuse me, among the things I'd like to make sure you're aware of and invite you to is, we are having an all-staff picnic on Friday, August twenty-third. Um, I'm in conversation with the folks at Sigma Point Golf Club and we thought we'd go up and sit on the patio and. Maybe do some burgers, I may have a chance to talk to Kelly about that, but we'll we'll look at Friday. Friday the twenty-third. Um, we had course registration last week and had a real successful couple of days, um, getting students to line out where. I wouldn't say we had a hundred percent participation, but we had really good participation and that all went well. Uh, a question for the board, um. I believe at the July board meeting, Kelly at courage suggested that we consider you, the board consider, which means I would consider going as well to the Mcel conference. Which is Friday the seventeenth of October and Saturday, or Thursday the seventeenth of October, Friday the eighteenth of October, it's in Missoula. And um, if you want to have some discussion that they, the only thing I've seen so far is the speaker that they announced. And I don't have a lot, I was gonna try to get something in my hand to share with you tonight, if I can get a copy of the registration. I will attach it to my board report tomorrow, so you can take a look and then maybe just send me an email or text.
Or and Connie, because Connie will book your hotel rooms and all of that for you all, should you choose to attend.
Yeah, so the exactly that point that we, if we're gonna go, maybe you're gonna go, we need to, we need to get on that, so. I'll see if I can't get some link or something that I can embed in this, um, so that you can take a look at it uh, to make a decision. Okie dokie. And then. Yeah, yeah, they haven't already, so. Uh, at the September board meeting, I want to give you a little uh, heads up, um, somewhat based upon the feedback you shared with me during my evaluation. Um, I've put together my goals for the coming year, I'm sharing those with all of the staff at our staff meeting on Monday. And I would like to share those with you at the September board meeting to give you an idea of the things I'm thinking about for the coming year. Um, three quick big things, big picture things, I am back to work full-time now, no more. Little trips here, little trips there, so I'm around the office if you need anything or um, or just need to chat or whatever. I will invite the new staff to the September board meeting at Joelyn's encouragement and um, we are looking at. Roxy and I've talked about, I've already talked to MSGIA, but we're gonna be looking at the crisis management plan, I spoke about that a year ago at a board meeting. And been struggling with exactly what next step to take, but I think I have a pretty good idea now and so we are gonna be working on. We have a crisis management plan that it hasn't been looked at and tweaked for quite a while and so um, MSGIA or the some of our insurance folks. That uh, there's a good friend of mine that works for them now and I spoke with her about giving our policy a scrub. And getting the team back together to kind of make sure that we're on board in the event, um, heaven forbid we'd have a crisis that we'd have to address. And so it's important to get those people back together and make sure our policies are in place to be able to address an emergency of some kind. And that's all I have.
Great, except is committee reports, uh, we don't have any committee meetings specifically this last month. Um, we need to schedule a policy meeting, meeting at some point. We want to make sure that gets sent before the September board meeting or can we wait?
That that, so the the other item I have for the policy committee meeting is the, we've got some details now from MTSBA about out of school, out of district. Student placements, I haven't had a chance to go through that packet, but we're gonna have to, some of those aren't for us to change our policy, but we need to be aware, I read. The disclaimer at the top of some of those pages, so. It'd be okay, I mean, either way, I don't, there's no urgency at all, okay, okay, we can wait.
Between now and next board meeting?
Pretty soon quick, I mean. And and end of the month, you think Gary might have some?
You set the meeting and I'll make sure you have. You set the meeting, I will push to get him here.
And like Kelly would be available because I want to discuss the levy.
But sounds good.
Just on Thursday? I don't care. I'll make anything work.
Could we do the twenty-seventh by chance?
Twenty-seven?
Yeah, it's twenty-seven CCPA, October.
CCPA already?
August twenty-seventh CCPA?
What's your schedule like for?
I think do any, any evenings after like five o'clock, other than Thursdays.
Other than Thursday?
Other than Thursdays.
When people don't want to do it on Friday, it'll, what about?
How long Darren's on that committee too, how long does he need to finish harvest?
I mean, it's next week, I'll bet.
Oh, Tuesday's twenty-seven, that that, so we don't want that.
Monday nights to twenty-six.
Twenty-six or.
That's the Booster Gold banquet, oh, Wednesdays are fairly safe because we have family night, so I don't have events.
No, I go down in the morning.
So on twenty-eighth, I can't remember, did somebody say that doesn't work?
I would say twenty-eighth of your, in the first week in September.
Let's go to twenty-eight.
Can you be earlier, Kelly?
We can do this. I can be here by five.
On twenty-eight, seven, five.
Twenty-eight to five, twenty-eight, five o'clock, that work? Oh, so there then.
That actually works better for him.
Okay, I'm not everybody falls presenting in that, true.
Um, I don't think they have any red potential or hiring on the list.
Do we policy?
Um, we're gonna wait and schedule that after the next board meeting, yeah. I'll make sure we get whatever motion, if you maybe. Just let me know if there's any motions that either come out of the building and grounds committee meeting, we'll make sure it gets on the agenda. Sometimes it's hard to get the proper stuff on the agenda.
Right.
So we'll make sure that happens.
How how soon does that have to be done?
We usually do it like on Thursday before.
Oh, like three days, okay.
I guess, that's it for that, we have a motion to adjourn.
So the next meeting is on a Wednesday or does that need to be September?
The next. Oh, that means, um, there we go. Should be on the tenth, not the eleventh.